Let's call this meeting back into session.
No.
Thank you all. Chief Underlin, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Bear with me, I'm dealing with a cold from the fire the other night on the real street, so I'm gonna be sucking on a breath mint.
Well, no problem.
My new favorite commercial is the guy that looks into his son's bedroom and says, "Dad's can't take a sick day." That's my new thing. The fire chief can't take a sick day.
No, well, of course not. Same, just same process we followed with the others. If you could just, for me, highlight any significant changes in your budget from 2014 to the proposed 2015?
Sure. And I'm gonna start off by saying, you know, I wanna highlight the overtime. When I get back to 2012, 2013 actuals, we were at nearly $3 million in overtime expense for the Bureau of Fire. That wasn't due to we were, and I think I made this clear, being a union member presenting the city council, but I wanna make it clear as a fire chief, why we were where we were and why we are where we are today. It wasn't because we were just arbitrarily calling people in and saying, "Hey, you wanna come work today? We'll pay you, you know, 15 hours overtime." We were where we were in 2012 and 2013 because we didn't have staff. We were down to a low of 62 firefighters in 2013. And that, we were on a trajectory this year, we would've exceeded $3 million. We'd have probably been about $3.4 million for overtime. When I took over as the acting chief on October the 26th of last year, my main goal to bring this fire department back in line and to be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars was to jump up and down and say, "We need to hire firefighters." Because we can't meet our minimum manning, our minimum staffing number, without paying overtime on a daily basis. And that was an ongoing issue, as you can see, for years. We were able to hire 13 new hires in 2014, as everyone's well aware. And also, over that time, late 2013 ended in 2014, we had four reinstatements as well. So we took our number from 63, 62, to 76, which has drastically significantly cut our overtime expense. With the addition of the positions that we have, new firefighters in the budget, we will again see savings. And that's a direct relation to, with our staffing as it is now, we have to have 15 and one firefighters, 15 firefighters and one command officer. If we only have, as we did in 2012, 2013, if we only had 11 people, we were calling four people for every shift overtime. And that just compounded. Today, we're not doing that. Our overtime numbers have been, and just to give you an idea, last November, the one payroll, we paid $120,000 in a two-week period for overtime. We are averaging right now around $28,000 to $30,000 in overtime, which is a significant savings. Seeing those savings, we had a lot of money budgeted, obviously this year in the 2014 budget for overtime, we were able to reallocate, and we're asking for reallocation to buy some necessary safety equipment, some radios that we are in dire need of. That $60,000, in my mind, is a historic thing because every year we've come down, the prior administrations have come down to council to increase, increase, increase the overtime. And this year, I'm coming to you and saying, "We have a surplus, and I'd like to spend that on the firefighters to keep them safe" and take $60,000 out of that. In my mind, that's historic because it'll be the first time, and probably, and this actuals only goes back to '12, but probably back to 2008, 2007-ish, be the first time that we're under $2 million, or, I'm sorry, under $1 million in overtime, which is, you know, just, you know, outstanding. And that, you know, that goes to the administration, that goes to the hard work that HR also put into getting those folks in on board this year. And we're gonna continue that trend to grow the fire department back. And quite frankly, we have a minimum manning number of 15 and one, and, you know, there was a lot of heartache with that. Most days now, we're working with 17 folks, 18 folks, and we're not paying a dime of overtime. So that's, and so we're protecting the citizens, you know, at a lot less cost and giving them a better quality service, which is something that we're forging ahead to do. Couple of the other things that we've been trying to do, bringing the TNA account online. We had about $80,000, $70,000 at the start of the year. I believe we're transferring over about $64,000. A lot of that was leftover money from when we had the urban search and rescue team, when it was actually housed here for equipment maintenance and things like that. And I would like to grow that account to buy different supplies and things that are currently being funded out of the general fund. And just an instant of things like that, we buy absorbent material to put down on diesel fuel leaks. Those incidents like that are billable to that trucking company. And we've successfully got almost $5,000 in just the last two months in billing those trucking companies for those incidents. We pay for those supplies out of our general fund account. But if we're billing for those incidences, we can put that into our special revenue fund, because that's an unknown what that is every, we don't know if we're gonna have 10 tractor trailers flip over or two. So that's a difference between one skid a hydra and five skids a hydra. So we can, we can kinda funnel some of that money then out of that special revenue fund, freeing up the general fund line item budgets to buy better quality tools and equipment for our firefighters to use on the street. And that's, that's what we've done over the years. Some of the reallocations that we've asked for, and, you know, I'm probably one of the biggest, biggest guys for that, has been to get our guys better equipment with the, with the excess money that we had because of the cut overtime and things like that. So that's, that's the big highlights in our budget. We're growing our number of firefighters and we're cutting the amount of overtime. One of the other things that I'd ask Bruce to do, and this, as you'll recall, I'd asked for several years ago, as I was sitting on this side of the table arguing against the prior administration on the overtime number, was we pay every two weeks. Our firefighters are entitled to four hours overtime. They work a 42-hour work week. And that is called premium time. It's not called overtime, it's called premium time by the contract. And it's a contractual obligation that we have to them. And we continuously put that under that overtime line item, inflating that by $325,000 every year. So what I've asked to do, and what we've done, is broken that premium time, that four hours every two weeks that they get, into a separate line item so that that's better accounted for and it's not actually showing up as overtime, which it truly isn't. It's a contractual obligation. Other than that, you know, I will, I wanna echo the comments of Chief Carter. David Batero, we have, the Fire Bureau and the Police Department, I don't think we've ever gotten along in my 15 years in this city the way we have this last year. We are going out and doing community events together. We have, you know, really used his expertise in reaching the community. We get, I'm not sure if anybody gets, we get these cards from the school that David gives out, and so the kids write us notes and, you know, "Hey Chief, what's happening? What are you, you know, what are you doing?" This one, this one was about her pet's cool, and then you write back to them, you know, why her pet was cool. And so it's things like that that get us, the fire department, the police department, interacting with the community more than we ever have. We're looking at a community event next week to do a cleanup in, around the Central Allison Hill Community Center that the firefighters are gonna be involved in, David Batero will be involved in, along with Capital Region Water. Those are the type of things that we wanna focus on going forward in the fire department, not only protecting the citizens, but also interacting with them and getting their support and showing that we're here for them, you know, even in non-emergency situations.
Great, thank you. In terms of questions, I'll start down once again at the end.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll just come right down the line again. Councilman Kupelinski.
Appreciate you coming out, Chief.
Now.
Look, you're making this too easy.
I'll keep going on line. See how far that goes here.
Okay. I got plenty of time, I got plenty of time, so. And I'm not on overtime tonight.
Hi, Chief, thanks for coming. That's a couple questions. Page 118. I noticed the building maintenance increased from 79 to 100,000.
Yes. And that is, that is a dire necessity. You know, and I think one of the things that even the mayor, when we had him out to the station a couple times, and I believe Councilman Baltimore can attest, our stations, and this, and this is why, that money that we are saving from overtime, we're reallocating to other areas of the budget, building maintenance being one of them. We have spent, allocated $20,000 for the last number of years to run the fire stations, and that barely even covers having a service contract to come out and look at furnaces and things. And we're, I'm proud to say, because of your grateful reallocation, we started construction on Monday of the complete total replacement of the HVAC at Station 2, which is gonna be a huge cost savings for us because we're gonna see cost savings in electric and natural gas. What they are, we don't have projected yet, but, you know, once it's in and running, it'll be great to look at that next year and see what our actuals are from that fire station.
Okay. That $80,000 that you have here for lease purchase, that for the fire ranger?
Yeah. Again, that, that was money that, basically, we had a surplus in the overtime projection, so let's, let's spend that to give the firefighters the best quality equipment we can. This lease purchase, we'll be able to leverage that with firemen's relief money and buy another fire truck, which will give our fleet, the oldest in our fleet frontline will then be a 2009. And then in 2016, then we can start looking at replacement of those so that we don't have, you know, huge maintenance costs.
How much did you get for the fireman relief? Did you get anything for them yet?
We, the way that works is we request funding from them for, to help with the fire truck. We wanna kinda creatively do this. Instead of us financing it, we'll allow them to finance it, and then we'll pay them a yearly lease purchase on it.
Okay, yeah. I'm aware of that. The $90,000 for capital out rate, what are you going, what is that proposed for?
What line item is that?
450100. So on page 120.
That's the total summary of two operations equipments, that's the summary.
Of the lease purchase.
Oh, okay, that's relief, oh, okay. So that, that's for your, sorry. Okay, for your operation equipment, okay. Okay. So your three captains, I see, are getting a longevity pay. How many other captains will be getting that? Or how many other officers, firefighters would be getting?
Well, everybody in the bargaining unit gets longevity.
I know, but this year, no, no more this year, that's what I'm asking.
No, the, only the new hires will not be getting that this year. So the new hires will not receive it. Anybody currently employed will, will receive that, that increase. And that's been a, not the longevity, but the ability for us to promote, because of the way the fire department was, quite frankly, gutted over the last couple of years, all of our senior management staff left, all of our battalion chiefs left, all of our captains left. And because of the civil service requirements to get our folks back online with the two years in-service grade that they have to have, we've had an issue, we don't have anybody that has enough time to promote them. So we just went through another promotional process, testing process, which we hope to promote from this, this coming spring. So once, once we get the Civil Service Commission in place and get our list certified.
Okay, thank you.
Which, which will then free up those, it's kinda creatively how we did this last year, to hire the 14 that we hired, ultimately became 13, is we use the battalion chiefs, which we didn't have, we use their salary to fund a lower funded position as a firefighter so that we were able to hire those folks in, so that the overall budget number was, was met. And we're trying to maintain as close to that 81 as we can.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm, I'm well, I think. How many kids do you hire out, do you get out of the Harrisburg School District to be firefighters?
I can't really speak to the last time, the last testing cycle, because it was under the prior administration. The best of my knowledge, and I, I really hesitate to say this, I believe we had maybe three candidates from Harrisburg apply. And that is one thing that Chief Carter and I, you know, are committed to working on. That's one thing that has always frustrated me, that we don't, we haven't reached out for some time to our schools and encouraged our young folks to stay in school and to do well in school, because we have good-paying jobs for them that, you know, that are, that are community service-minded jobs right here in our own city. And we've never really tapped into that resource that we have. And our plans are to collectively, police and fire together, as well as codes, go and present to kids, starting in, say, 7th, 8th, 9th grade, before they decide to drop out of school, give them that encouragement that if you stay in school, we have these jobs available. If you get a good education, if you stay out of trouble, we can hire you and, and we want to hire you, so that we can increase the number of folks that we have of color, and also females. Our last, we had, one time had four female firefighters. Our last female firefighter is retiring December the 30th. And we will, for the first time since 1986, not have a female firefighter. And that's, you know, we need to reach out and, and try and get some more female firefighters as well.
Thank you. The reason why I asked that is because you start at, what, 18?
Uh, 19, yeah, 19.
And we have a lot of kids that not, not dropouts. We have a lot of kids that go through the athletic program through the school, that are physically fit, that do not go on to the military service, that, that don't go on to college. And I feel as though that there's a pocket of an area that, you know, these physically fit athletes could really satisfy by being a firefighter, but they don't know. A lot of times I tell kids, I'm like, "Did you ever think about being a firefighter?" They're like, "We didn't know we could do that." So I really would like to see a lot more of that in the coming years.
I could not agree with you more. And I think, again, and I can't say this strong enough, we have, we have a lot of young, intelligent kids in our community that would make perfect fits as, as police and firefighters. And we need to, we need to go out and, and find them and attract them to us, instead of, you know, quite frankly, getting folks from outside the area that are just gonna come here, take a paycheck, and go home. And it's a way that we can give back to, to the kids and give them some, you know, some buy-in to the, to the city as well.
Thank you. No further questions, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, listen.
I really don't have any questions, maybe a comment, just to dovetail off of what she's saying. Maybe that's something that David Batero can coordinate for both you and the police chief to have a, a community day at the high school, looking for potentially building program where you'd have them intern in your departments in their senior years, whereby it would develop the skills that are needed and give our children an opportunity to decide at that time whether or not they would want to seek a job, whether it would be in firefighting or in law enforcement. And I think that would be a great outreach program that we can develop with the high school. Because a lot of times, years past, we used to have it, at least I'd say about, maybe 40-some years, 50 years ago, when I was in high school. But we had a, we had internship programs. And so I think it would behoove the city to maybe engage in that activity again, because in that way, you can pull from a resource of children that otherwise, once again, are not going to college or not going into armed services, but will provide them with the opportunity to come into government service right here versus even the state. I mean, everyone believes that you either go to the state, you go to college, you go to service. Maybe their service would be with our local government here versus having to make that decision to leave here and go elsewhere.
Yeah, that's a point well taken, and a good one as far as the shadowing goes. We had a young, young man last school year, I got a phone call from the school district, November, December of last year, he had to do a senior project, and it had to be in public service. He chose public service. And it was, it was intriguing to me because the coordinator, she said, "We've never dealt with the fire department. We don't know what you can do for us." And we opened it up, Trevon Washington was, was a young gentleman's name, and he did an outstanding job with us. And as I understand, he is now a volunteer firefighter, applied to be a volunteer firefighter in one of the surrounding communities. And we have multiple young folks like that in Harrisburg that, that have been mentored by the fire department. And now our, our process, our goal has to be to mentor them to a point where we can actually hire them. And, and still in them, you wanna be hired here as opposed to going somewhere else to be a firefighter or, or a police officer.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Baltimore, hands his finger.
Do you have it, I'm sorry?
I was just gonna say, piggybacking on both of you, there's, there's three relationships I think you could probably exploit a little bit. And one, I think my kid is developing a relationship with the Harrisburg Cougar Football Team, and they're in weight training. It might be a group of football players you could come up and make a presentation, bring a truck up and, you know, run the bells and whistles. The other thing is, there's some people who want to revamp a scouting program. I think pretty much Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts have died in the city of Harrisburg. 240 over at St. Paul was probably the last one, and if it's not on its last leg, it's already dead. But we've been approached by the KLS House, or people from the KLS House who wanna do an after-school Cub Scout program. And that might, might be another aid where you can get some traction. And the school relationship, I mean, you could probably just go up to one of the high schools and you could develop the relationship and just, you know, do the bells and whistles. Or the gentleman right behind you, who's been coaching and organizing and doing baseball for 21 years, has at least, you know, every year, hundreds of kids at an impressionable age that might be really fascinated by the firefighters, I think, in the career of firefighters.
And I think our approach not only has to be telling them, but interacting. As, as I see, and I like all three of the ideas you have, my, my vision for that would be that we would go and interact with them by working out with them and showing them that we're people too, and that we have to be healthy to be a firefighter. That we would go and watch baseball games. When I first come on the job, we used to go south side and watch baseball games, have the, have the companies out interacting with those kids as they're playing baseball. I mean, we're, we're public servants, we need to be out there in the community. And that's how we build those relationships, to bring those young folks to us. And that's, that's our goal going forward. I have a chart on my wall that I drew up last year, you know, if I were to become the fire chief, what would I do? One of those goals is to be in the community, encouraging young kids to be involved with, with the fire department, and having a two-way conversation as opposed to us telling them.
I think you're off the hook, Chief.
That's it.
You're all good.
Yeah, I could segue to public works. From, from a vehicle maintenance standpoint, and this, this goes back a couple of budgets, I don't even wanna guesstimate when it was, two, three years ago, we had stripped out of the Fire Bureau budget the vehicle maintenance line items, and they were all transferred to the VMC. We have found that, it's not that the VMC doesn't do, doesn't do good work, it's that they can't do the work on our, on our equipment. And it is, one of the first things that I saw, and, you know, quite frankly, we had grievances on, is that the, the apparatus wasn't being maintained properly because we had to go to outside vendors. And what ended up happening, I would have to call the VMC, the VMC would have to call the vendor, the vendor would then call the VMC, the VMC would call me, it was just, it just didn't work. So the way it works now, after the reallocation that we'd asked for, to put money into our budget for vehicle repairs and maintenance, is that now I make the phone call to the, to the vendors to come in and fix the things. That way, in the morning, when I get a write-up on a vehicle, I can call within a couple of day period and have those things taken care of. And we're starting to get back on track with, with vehicle maintenance. It has been extremely costly to us. And again, that's, going forward, we have a significant amount of money asked for this year because of what we've seen this past year with vehicle maintenance. We have one fire truck that we have over $40,000 in repairs into this year. And by pairing those off and buying new apparatus, that will help cut down on the amount of money that we're spending on vehicle repairs and maintenance.
I've got one more question.
Sure, go ahead. Sure.
Grants, what about grants? Same thing I asked the chief.
Yep.
Do you have any grants that you're applying for that you're gonna be looking at coming into this year?
You know, and I neglected to talk about that. Errol and I actually sat down last week and finished up our FEMA grant for, it's called AFG Assistance to Firefighters.
AFG Assistance?
Yep, AFG Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And we have an ask-in for about $235,000 to purchase new radios, safety equipment, and supply hose for on our fire trucks. We also have the Community Block Development Grant money for $98,500 for the roof replacement. And we have an ask-in to the County Gaming Advisory Board for $300,000 as a leveraged match for the gaming grant, I'm sorry, the gaming grant money would be leveraged with the Community Block Development Grant money, as well as the $100,000 in our budget for building maintenance to take care of roof repair, roof replacement, and then also other repairs that we need at the fire station. And Errol's done a great job. We've been, we were successful in getting a training grant last year for $120,000, which we, we continue to get money in as we send our folks to training. That's been reimbursed from the federal government. That's a reimbursement-type grant, so we spend it, and then they reimburse us less 10%. We have a 10% match on that grant. And we're also in, the grant process hasn't opened yet, but most likely February, we'll be applying for another Assistance to Firefighters grant, and that will be for fire prevention and safety. And so we're gonna ask for things like smoke detectors and a fire safety house, which we, we no longer have. I will note tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna get some, another delivery of smoke alarms in, and we'll have a little press, press about that tomorrow when we take delivery of those. But that, that's what we'll also be asking for in that Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. And then additionally, when it opens back up again, the Safer Grant, which we were awarded in 2009, eight, nine, we will be reapplying for that to hire additional firefighters in as well. So we, we're constantly looking, and that's, once we get a, you know, a deputy chief in place after the first of the year, it'll give me some time to do some, some other things, looking for grants, you know, being one of the main things, to see, and talk to foundations, the Klein Foundation and places like that that, you know, may have 10,000 or 15,000 to give us, that can help us with tools and equipment and supplies, and help offset the general fund obligation then.
Chief, you were talking about your, your maintenance and repairs. Are you talking about $119,500, or are you talking about $150,000?
The $150,000. And that's, yeah, and that's for fire apparatus and the, the vehicles and boats, all of our, I would say, equipment on wheels, but our boats don't have wheels on them. So all of our equipment that is drivable.
The trailers have wheels. You said that they come in and they repair the vehicles?
Correct.
Or we, we take the trucks to their facilities? Where is this repair being done?
We, a little bit of both, quite frankly. We have, we have a company out of Lancaster that has a road mechanic that comes in and does work for us.
They come to the firehouse?
They come to the firehouse, correct. And then the other is Fire Rescue Products, which is up on Industrial Road. And they actually, they do a lot of our maintenance, and that, that's a mix. Majority of that work is actually done at their facility. And then we also use a couple other garages that specialize in diesel engines to do some of that work, because they can't get, the new VMC, we can't get some of the larger fire truck, well, all of our fire trucks are large. Most of them won't fit in to be able to be worked on, and they don't have the specialized equipment for some of the diesel engines that we have. So.
And then your trucks are being fixed out there? Cause I'm not finding some out there.
Our fleet, our, our small vehicles, our Suburbans that pull the boats, the chief's cars, are going out to the VMC.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
That was easy.
All right.
That's cause you're not on the fire.
Next up, we have Mr. Johnson from Public Works. Come on down.
We're gonna invite up Wayne Martin, too.
Oh, perfect.
Who is city engineer.
Thank you for joining, Mr. Martin.
They're gonna present you, but I was going to start because we have been looking at this budget since we introduced the council, very carefully, continuing to meet. And we feel that we can make some slight adjustments in the Public Works budget, which we'd like to propose as amendments. They are basically four different things, which I will outline, and then if you have questions, you can direct them to the Public Works Director. The, and it's good news, we believe we can hire three more Public Works employees. They'll be unionized employees, and it'll be part of continuing to grow the city. We've looked closely at how to do this. At the time we submitted the budget, we didn't have that worked out, but we do now. The first is, we'd like to hire an additional street maintenance worker. Now, I should say, all three of these positions, there's three positions in arrays, which, which I will discuss, but the, the three positions were positions that had been frozen previously that we didn't carry forth, and we hadn't figured out a way to carry forth, but we, we now have a way to carry forth. So there are positions that have historically been filled, weren't filled this past year, but we'd like to fill for next year. So the first is a street maintenance worker position. And we'll let Wayne speak to this in a minute, but what we have discovered and gotten clarification on is that we can pay for that position out of our liquid fuels allotment. It is a legitimate use for labor, and it can bill that fund according to the, you know, to, it's a very, it has to be very strict and well-documented, but nonetheless, that work can be attributed to that. There is enough money in the liquid fuel funds to be able to pay for that, that particular worker. So we feel we can, in fact, do a street maintenance worker. This is different. We've never tried to pay for labor out of liquids fuel before, and historically, we've been spending liquids fuel on electricity. We're changing all that. We're trying to wean ourselves off electricity. We have a lighting conversion, and we're freeing up. conversion, and we're freeing up more of that liquids fuel money to be able to pay for other things. But I'll let Wayne, the engineer, talk to that, but that is one additional position that we'd like to see added. The other two positions are both demolition specialists, and this was really an oversight on our part. We were talking to, I was talking to Councilman Allen over the break, about how, the reason you don't see anything for building and housing in the budget is because that's all the CDBG budget, which is a separate budget, approved in a different cycle, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the way the demolition, the in-house demolition team was set up was, it bills CDBG, and it pays for demolition work through a reimbursement from that fund, from the demolition money that you've already approved in that, in that budget. We did not recognize that at the time we proposed the budget, and we should have, so we can put those two positions back in, in fact, we need to, in order to be able to access those funds and bill CDBG. So, that's three, three positions, very exciting. It should also be noted that the reason that we do the demolition in-house to begin with is because it's much cheaper to pay our own employees to do that than it is to outsource demolition. We still have to outsource demolition, special jobs, but this is, historically, it's been a great cost-saving measure. I think Dave Patton is still here, he can talk about it, too, if you have more questions about why it was set up, but this is actually a very important program. And then, the fourth and final change that we are proposing.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm sorry, excuse me. As a matter of point, as a matter of record, every other department head was able to come to the table and give us their proposals as far as their changes from that department head.
There are no other change, these are amendments to the budget, so these are amendments that we are proposing.
But you're giving an oversight for the department, and I just don't think that that's fair to the department head, because you didn't do it with economic development, you didn't do it.
They're not proposing amendments to the budget.
These are amendments he's proposing.
These are, these are amendments to our, I'm the one that has, the administration is what, who proposes the budget, I have to propose those amendments. You may, and we did discuss this ahead of time, and we're all in favor of this, so I don't think there's any controversy here, but you can ask them about it. But I'm putting them on the record, because these will be, just as you may have amendments to the budget, we would like to offer additional amendments. And so, the final one, and then I'm done, I promise, is that we are proposing a raise, and this is sort of a case in point raise, so let, you know, let's look at this, it's a relatively significant raise, but it is a raise to currently our streetlights coordinator, another mid-level management position. Because we want to give that position additional responsibilities, I'll let the director explain it, in terms of maintenance, and we believe that we can take the raise money from the maintenance line item, add it to the, to the personnel line item for this position, expect additional work performance from the individual, and save money for the city at the same time. It basically means, he'll be doing more building, this is a master electrician, this is a licensed individual who can do more building maintenance, which is less that we have to outsource. So, when that was proposed, and it was proposed again by the Public Works Director, I thought that's an excellent example of, of why we should do a raise, it'll save money for the city, and it's going to seem like a large percentage, but again, it comes with, it comes with additional responsibilities. That's our proposal, and we can, we can discuss it, but that is, that is why. It's also a mid, mid-level management made, raise in keeping with the others.
What is going from what to what?
I'll let the director tell you.
And he's going to talk to the street maintenance worker with their salaries.
Yep, he can do all that. I'm just, I just wanted to introduce those four amendments, and now I'll turn it over to the department.
First of all, good evening. I want to thank everybody for this opportunity, I guess I'm going last, I'm the rookie of all the directors, but I know my chairperson always liked to make sure that I'm okay, I appreciate that, but I'm a big boy, I can handle it, we already discussed this. As far as a street foreman, streetlight foreman, I know we talked, I heard in there, we talked about our police coordinator, let me just tell you about my guy, okay, since we're talking about guys, we 24/7 operation, don't make no mistake about Public Works. Me and Dave sitting out there looking out now about the weather conditions, so we're not going to sleep. When we leave here, probably got to call people in there by 2 o'clock, because the temperature's dropped, we got to worry about them hills and them ramps, okay? Well, Kevin Baum is one of those guys, too. He takes care of all the traffic, well, with his crew, and his four of them, well, five, we've, we got one that's retiring from there at the end of the year. But Kevin Baum's on call also, you know, we don't have weekends, we don't have that comp time no more, so we don't get compensated for none of that. He don't get paid a good salary. Me and Dave had the great president that we got promoted, so there's no increase as far as me and Dave, but as far as Kevin, Kevin makes a little bit like $46,000. He's well underpaid, well underpaid. And while we bringing it up now, kind of like, we looking at the budget, and I didn't want to bring no raises up, but since we was promoting other people in other departments, hey, we work 24/7. Anybody's deserving, Public Works is deserving, trust me when I tell you that, okay? Kevin's well qualified, like I said, his certification speak for itself, right now we got a major project coming up, as far as the streetlights going up, Kevin's a part of all that, you know, he's going to be putting a whole lot of time in. Also, Kevin, this is not his first rodeo with the city, worked with the city before, he was actually building manager here, so he's familiarized with this building, and when we have trouble with the facility, like the heat and all that, Kevin's the one coming down here and does all that, you know, so we getting more for a bang for a buck with Kevin, and he's, you know, wearing two hats, so I feel as though that, you know, we should compensate him for that, you know, you know, we shortened staff and everything, but when you got good workers like that, you know, you want them to stay with the city, we need to be competitive with other wages, and I feel as though that he's well deserving of it, you know, I'm not saying that Dave and them is not, all I'm saying is my guy, we 24/7, you know, workers, you know, and I just, I really feel as though that he really deserves it, you know, and again, I had to take, you know, you know, responsibility for that, that I didn't put in for that, and like I said, other than, other than Kevin and myself and Dave, and, you know, like I said, we just got our raise, so, you know, that's why I didn't happen to say anything about that, and then I'd be selfish about me and him, because we came from, Dave came from, what he was making is 60, and I came from 60, because Dave is my old position to 70, so I mean, I don't, me and him don't deserve no raise, but Kevin Baum, well deserving of it, and I can't, you know.
What's that?
Speak for yourself.
What's the, what's the proposed increase?
It's about, he's at, he's at like 40, it's like about 12,000.
He's actually making, he's actually making less than the people he's supervising.
Where's he at now?
He's making less than the people he's supervising.
He's at 45,760 now.
4760, and he's going to go up to 60.
Yeah, he's going, going to 57 we was proposing.
A 57?
Yes.
Hold on, give me a second. So, he's at 45,760, taking up?
It'd be a high percentage.
Yeah.
57?
It's like 11,000 or something. And we're going to be, we're going to be rewriting his job responsibilities also, so.
He has the, the background and the experience as building manager to be able to save us in outsourcing additional maintenance costs.
All right.
Very good.
How about your demolition specialists, what are they going to be making?
They're going back with the. It's a union pay scale, yeah.
And that's coming out of CDBG anyway, correct?
Reimbursed, through reimbursement.
What's your salary, Dan?
Low, low 40s, right?
Yes, low 40s.
Do you know?
40s.
Well, if you take 78, 71 divided by 2, and that's their number, 44 roughly? 44 with the FICA, so it makes about 46, 47, something like that, yeah.
And those are, those are not obviously hired yet, so we'd be advertising for them in January and bring him on board over.
Because the budget right now is zero. If you look at the fine item, they're showing a zero, but his amendment is to bring them back in.
Right.
At the 2, that says 78,271 divided by 2 is 44,1, 44,1, 3, 5.
Wayne, how much does the street maintenance worker make? Do you have that? It's also an entry-level union position.
He's 1, 2.
Yeah, demolition specialist.
No, but also the street maintenance worker, the other, the fine, the third position, also entry-level, I believe, low 40s.
The street maintenance worker, 3?
No, he's a 1, he's going to be a 1.
41.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're going to see that?
Yeah, it's like 40, 46, 70, 27.
All sudden, okay.
And that's, that's all, loaded?
Okay. All right, why don't we start with Ms. Reed, questions?
Good evening. How are you? I guess you're fine.
Oh, what you talking to me, I ain't know you talking to yourself, I'm fine.
And he's going to get the questions, he already should have them, but anyway, he's the only reason I'm here, so.
She's here for you.
It was last time. Now, you're adding three positions back, thank you very much, because you know I was right on top of that with the net loss of seven positions to Public Works, you know. When you say, what are the seven positions, you're bringing back the two demolition specialist positions, but there was three that were, that were pulled out of the budget. There were actually three.
Can I speak on that? Okay. Actually, when we first started, the program was four, okay? When Oren Burns left, we never filled the position, Dave West used to be demo, we never filled the position, so actually, we only had two, and that's Dale currently is the supervisor, and Jake actually just bitted out on one of the positions, heavy equipment operator, when one of the guys retired. So, actually, we only had two, because we never filled the two positions, we only had two, and what we, what we always do is, we always take two personnel from out of highway to actually work with, some of the guys that can drive the equipment, to work with the demo when we tear down houses. So, in actuality, we actually gained one back, we only had two.
But it was budgeted for three?
Yes.
It was budgeted for three, that's why I said we still have a net loss.
If we're talking about last year's budgeted numbers, just keep in mind.
No, I'm talking about, I didn't even go that far back to see what we had last year.
No, but, I know, I'm just saying, from the public standpoint, there were a number of...
Somebody must have hid my 2014 budget.
There were a number of, it's better to compare to the adjusted budget for 2014 than the proposed budget for 2014, because remember, the proposed budget for 2014 contained positions in the budget, but then subtracted the money to pay for those positions in another line item elsewhere, so it's actually, it's representing a, an increase for Public Works, not a decrease.
Well, I'm going by the adjusted position, because some little elf took my 2014 budget, so I can't even go back and get those numbers, because those are the numbers I really want, but I couldn't find it. So, I'm going by your, what's in this book here, so it was actually three in the budget, and you're bringing back two, so that's still a net loss of one.
Yes, here, I'm going to show you, here.
I'm looking right at it.
Here's last, here's the report, here, take the page.
I think it's fair to say we're going to be adding two.
No, I'm going by what he has here with his demolition.
It was a demolition three, and one of them, and two demolition specialists, one.
Exactly.
So, that's three.
That's three. Okay. Just counting them out. All right, you eliminated, we got past that, so you're okay with still the net loss of the one in demolition?
Yes, because there's one more that we...
Because you only had two that actually did the work.
Right, so, and one more that we, we didn't have, because we always worked with two for the longest.
All right, you eliminated the street maintenance worker, three, added a street worker, two, and eliminated the street worker, one, which is, again, a net loss of one position. The question I have is, why did we eliminate the street maintenance worker, three? Because that seems as though it's an opportunity for somebody to move into a position.
Okay, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we had two guys that actually got promoted, two of two, I should indicate that. Didn't Dan get promoted to the three?
Yeah, we have three now.
Yeah.
You have three now, yes, somebody did get promoted.
Yeah, yeah, so, so Dan Wellington got promoted to a three, so it was two, it was Ed Teller and Eric got promoted to two, and Dan Wellington got promoted to three.
That's not what it says.
That just happened recently.
It says that we're eliminating the three.
Now, that, now the street maintenance worker that, that, that we need to replace, that was Dennis Samori, he actually moved up to a constructive tradesman, one of the guys retired this past year, so Dennis' position is what we didn't fill, that's what we...
And that's the street maintenance three?
Yes.
Because he was promoted, then he went to, he took the...
Yes, yes, he took, he took, he took, now, he didn't make more money, because that's, that's the same.
But I was thinking that if you wanted to keep people, maintain people, you would give them something to work towards, and when you eliminate a, a three position, I'm questioning, you know, why would we eliminate a position where somebody could possibly get more, more authority, more, you know, responsibility?
Well, in our case, unfortunately, with the two guys that we actually got promoted, they're actually working out of sanitation, they're two drivers, they're MEOs, but they're street maintenance workers, okay? But we had to promote them, we couldn't not give them their promotion because they're working in sanitation, that wouldn't be fair to them, it's not their fault that we had to make sure that we had a commitment to sanitation. So, to make that a three, we, I mean, for me personally, I would make it a one, because we don't have anybody, with Dennis leaving, Dennis is the most senior person there, so, you know, with him going to constructive tradesman, he can train somebody, but we don't have nobody to move up, the rest of them guys are in other positions.
You have to go according to the union contract, do you?
Yes.
Tell me about the gardener position and, and the labor one position, now we're getting back, which one did you say we're getting back? But tell me about the gardener position that's being eliminated, why is that being eliminated?
Okay, this is, this is why it was eliminated.
Don't tell me what you told me earlier.
No, I'm, well, you know, I mean, I'm trans, I'm transparent, I mean, you know, one thing about it, you tell the truth, you ain't ever about lying, you know what I mean, I'm transparent. One, the problem was that we always had to hire somebody because of seniority and all that. Well, to be a gardener, you gotta know what you're doing, you know what I mean, you have to have some type of skills, you have to have some type of credentials, and too many times that, you know, we just put people in position because I got more seniority than him. No, I wasn't doing that, because what happens is, you don't have nothing but a body, he can't do the job, and that's what was happening, so I said, you know what, I don't want to put those guys in parks and rec maintenance, because what was going to end up happening is, somebody else would have to do his job, you know, so I said, well, you know, we might as well go ahead and abolish it, because, well, I'm just putting a body there, I mean, you know how frustrating it is to work with somebody that makes the same amount of money you do, but don't know his job? That's frustrating. I mean, I hated that, lose that position, but what else was I going to do, because your hands is tired, you know, and that, and that's what would have happened. You talking about somebody making that kind of money, and the labor pretty much might know more than him, but because he got more seniority than that labor, he can't get the job.
The responsibilities of the gardener, who's going to pick them up?
Well, we already have one, I mean, you know, my botanic guy, you know, most, most of the guys that I got down there in parks and rec maintenance, they know what they're doing, and they've been there, you know, they got about 20...
And we're also hiring an arborist, that...
And that, and that definitely going to help.
That's being paid for out of, out of the host fee, and that job description has now been completed, and it's being advertised, too, so that's good. Also, these weren't filled this year either, so it's not like there's an existing person that somehow being let go.
No, no, I understand that.
Just, I'm just, for people watching at home.
But when we're doing head counts, and we're talking about, you know, how many people do you actually need to actually run your operation, and we're talking about loss of labor positions and, and positions that, you know, we can, that, that we're losing because bodies, when you...
But we're not, we're growing Public Works, there are going to be many more bodies in Public Works next year than there were this year. Those, that, these were empty positions without a body that weren't filled this year, because we couldn't fill them, because we, again, we put them in the budget but didn't have means to pay for it, and, and now, we're, in the instance of the gardener, we're sort of upgrading to an arborist, and, there you have it. We're going to have a high, we're going to have more public worker, more unionized public workers in the Public Works Department next year than we've had this year, significantly.
Can you tell me the difference between the, do you have a new position in here, the enforcement coordinator? And what is the difference between enforcement coordinator and the solid waste enforcement technician?
The technician is, pretty much is going to be, that's our enforcement piece, that we actually going to be, you know, giving out citations finally, you know, and I can't, can't wait to put that thing to really take off, because, man, I mean, you drive around the city, like I said, you know, you might see, supposed to be the ordinance says six you might see, supposed to be the ordinance says six bags, one bulk item and one recycling. You might see sixty-six bags in front of somebody's house, trash bags, and I'm talking about without a can. So Keith's been, you know, hitting the street running, you know? We already met a couple of times as far as how we gonna get these fees, you know? That's with, you know, with the solicitor, making sure that we have all that taken, you know, taken care of. But I think that position is, it's real vital to, you know, to our mission right now, as far as what we trying to do with sanitation.
Well, I'm talking about the sanitation billing enforcement coordinator.
Right, the other person is doing the billing-
Oh, the billing, okay.
Associated with sanitation, which will also be billing potential fines as well. But that has to do with the fact that Capital Region Water is leaving, and the sanitation is being separated. And now, the city has to do that, and we need somebody to coordinate that from the city's standpoint.
So that's an administrative position?
Yes.
Okay, because I saw that, and I'm like, what is this?
We gotta do our own billing now.
I got that. I'm seeing that now. I just have a couple more questions. In the mayor's presentation, Mr. Mayor, maybe you can speak on this. You said that there's 2.9 in capital overlays for capital expenditures that's coming to Public Works. Where's that money coming from? Two million in capital expenditures.
You're referring to, I think, the disposal fund. So these are, this is coming from money that people pay to have their garbage disposed of. And historically, in Harrisburg, that money has not gone to upgrading the fleet and maintaining the fleet, which is necessary to run a proper sanitation department for the city. So we're dealing with a lack of investment in sanitation, which goes back years and years. I don't know, possibly, I don't know how long. And we're compensating for that finally by reinvesting that back into, into the actual equipment upgrades and the other proposals that we have for sanitation.
We've been able, over the past eighteen months, since the rate schedule change that was passed in July of 2013 by council, small amounts every month has accrued, and it's been, you know, almost eighteen months now. And we feel like we have enough in there now, at this point, to be able to now use it to invest back into sanitation.
How much is in there now?
I think we're proposing to-
That correlates to the amount that we're proposing to spend on sanitation.
About a little less than, a little more than a million dollars extra.
Where's that at?
It's in a fund balance. It's in the disposal fund. You'll see the-
1.6342, 1,634,200 dollars.
Yeah, right. So the estimated cash carryover of 2,090,000, so.
The reason why I ask that is because you also, there's also a plan here. Can you tell us a little bit about the trash can plan, for lack of a better explanation?
Toters.
Okay, yeah, todes is what we call them. Okay.
The toter totters.
Basically, we're gonna actually start with the commercial accounts first, okay? That's what our plan is, actually replace, not all of the commercial accounts. It's gonna be some commercial accounts that is gonna be able to keep their dumpsters. The consultants that we had, basically, is, you know, they looked at it, from us being, having rear loading with the cable system that we have, it's kind of dangerous. Even snapping, you know, the type of thing, you know, because we have an old fleet, for one thing. But they said it's gonna be more safe to actually have the toders, so we can, that's where we're gonna be getting tippers, because like I said, we get ready to put a whole lot of money in sanitation. So some of the commercial accounts actually have the toders there, and that way, like I said, it'd be more safe for the guys. But we're gonna start with the commercial accounts first. And then after that, somewhere in July, then we'll start with residential, far as having toders. And we're looking at it like, I mean, we're talking about outsourcing this. If the new company was coming in, that's what they was gonna provide, toders. And in a uniformity, you know, it's gonna look good throughout the city. It's, I really think it's gonna prevent having trash all over the place. You know, again, I mean, it took us a while to get in the situation that we in, and it's gonna take a minute to get out of it, you know? But I just really feel like with us putting this investment in sanitation, and first of all, I want to thank this administration and also city council for not outsourcing sanitation. You know, sanitation is a real passion with me. You know, most of y'all do know, me and Dave started on the ground. He was a MEO, I was a laborer. So, you know, we came all the way through, and I feel as though with things that's being put in place, you know, you're giving us an opportunity to prove ourselves that we can do it. It can be done. We've been picking up the trash with the dinosaur situations that we have. So with things getting better for us, it's gonna make things easier for us, especially at enforcement piece, because, you know, if we did outsource it, we all know that if you don't pick Miss Jane's trash up, because she had more than what she's supposed to, and Republican wasn't gonna get it, who you think gonna get it? Public Works still gonna get it. It didn't matter. We still gonna have to get it, because y'all gonna get phone calls, the mayor's gonna get phone calls, and at the end of the day, you want the trash up. Irregardless who's gonna get it, somebody better come get it, you know? And I just, I really, I really want to thank y'all for really supporting us, that, again, we need to keep it in-house. We really do, you know? So again, it looks like, you know, with these toders, we need to, we need to be uniform, you know?
How much is this gonna cost?
We talking about, as far as a million dollars, we talking about for residential. Commercial's supposed to be like 500,000.
Eight fifty for the residential.
Eight hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
1.3, 1.4.
That's the trash total, and then 230 for the recycling toders. So as you said, about a million dollars, but it's both recycling and then trash.
Now, some of these toders, we got a 904 grant, I know we still have some money in our account, which we actually just purchased, 100 recycling, the blue ones, 96 gallons, and 100 of the gray ones for some commercial accounts that do recycling. So, you know, again, I get with Earl, trying to reach out to some of the grants, where we ain't just, you know, taking all this money. It's granting money out there, in which the consultants basically was talking about that also, so, you know?
Well, the reason why I asked that is because when you're talking about a million dollars and providing trash cans, and you know, everybody knows I am a fan. I am number one when it comes to a trash can in every house. I'm like Uber with a chicken in every pot, a car in every garage. I want a trash can in every house. But when you're talking about a large number of a million dollars, I need to make sure that we're not overextending ourselves and saying that we're gonna put out a million dollars to buy trash cans. And my next series of questions is gonna be about your fleet, you know? Where are we at with the fleet? You know, we have allocated in the budget $500,000 for maintenance and repairs, which I think is grossly underestimated when you're dealing with the fleet. We know that a truck, a Packer truck is 120,000 dollars for a Packer truck. So we know that we would like to be purchasing one or two Packer trucks annually to replace the aging fleet. Where exactly are we at with maintaining the fleet, and how much money do we have allocated for that part of it?
Let's just say that the money for maintaining the fleet is in multiple places.
Yeah, and we are gonna be, we are gonna be overhauling the sanitation fleet. There is, I mean, I'm sure it will be publicly presented, the study from the consultants, once it's finalized. And this will basically confirm what we're saying, but since it hasn't been released yet, we needed to get into the budget. We're gonna be overhauling the fleet with new chassis and new lifts. So, and that's another, next year, we're gonna spend 360,000 dollars to do that. And that's, that's in the expenditure line item in the disposal fund. And Aaron can speak, obviously, to more of the technical details of that.
Yeah, let me give you an example here, I want some woman to read. Like A40, 41, 43, and 49, okay? Right now, those are the vehicles that we actually have in existence, okay? And again, we have issues with those, like we got leaking hydraulic fluid from the cylinders, seals, need hoppers, liners, beds need welding, and tire lifts, okay? The ones that we talking about, putting new engine and transmission in, that would be A45, 47, and 48, okay? Because that'll be the new engine, transmission, cylinder repair, and tire lifts. A23 needs a tire lift and hopper liner. A44 bed needs welding, total lift and new hubs. A46 need total tire lift, okay? We in the process of purchasing, you know, a new recycling truck, 250,000 dollar grant that we got. The current recycling truck we have is over at Five Star. It's like 10,000 dollars for a transmission. Me and Dave rode down there with two consultants down in Shippensburg, which they have, I think, what is it today? 2000, what, 2010 recycling truck. They don't want much for, in good shape, we drove it around. Actually, it's like the one that we have over there at Five Star. Because currently, we're operating with three one-ton trucks, and we know we in winter season. The one-ton trucks we use supply, so we got a little situation there. We've been working, thank God, we hadn't had no serious, no. So this is the situation in our trucks now, and I know the residents are listening, which is a good thing here. Because right now, we have like four trucks that's in operational. Our other two crews come in late. They come in like 11, 11:30, because we've been getting, I ain't gonna say volume of phone calls, but when it's your trash day, they used to, the trash guys starting at five. Well, we got two crews that have to wait for a truck. So that's where we be getting the phone calls, saying, hey, I didn't get my trash yet. We ain't out there yet, that's all. Because, you know, we've been putting Band-Aids on our vehicles, so we can keep going. But what we need to do, and we talking to Gray Bill, as far as, and I gotta get with Bruce on this, as far as us being able to have vehicles, so we can get our vehicles to actually, all of them be fixed, you know? So we can start off with our vehicles properly being fixed. Because right now, all we do is kind of like, the MC put that Band-Aid on us and keep us going. Because one thing about sanitation, as you all well know, you can have that leaf collection, you can get by with leaving leaves out there. You can't leave that trash out there.
No, you can't.
You can't leave that trash out there.
So Bruce, are we on task? Are we, we have enough money allocated? You're gonna tell me throughout the budget, where exactly all of this money's at? You can send me an email and tell me exactly where the fleet maintenance monies are at. Because I want to make sure, you know, that was the conversation I had with the Public Works Director, is that I love trash cans, but I would like to see the trucks that pick the trash up. I saw a truck slinging on the back of a, on the back of a tow truck the other day. You know, I took a picture. I mean, you know, I was at Public Works facility. There's two trucks down, and one, that same day, two trucks are down, and I get right back to work, coming right up Forest Street. There's another one slung on the back of a tow truck. So, you know, there's a serious problem when you're talking about keeping the vehicles up and running, and you're talking about the overtime and things like that. All of that plays into it. And the morale, when your vehicles aren't running, your lifts aren't running, the cables are broken, that plays into the morale factor when you're talking about your people.
So we're gonna fix all of that. Right now, the fleet is a mess, absolutely. There's been no maintenance, no money put into it. If you recall from last year, one of the arguments for privatization was, city has no money to do it, a new company will come in, they'll buy a new fleet of trucks, and that was, that was the big argument for why we had to privatize. What we're, what we're looking, and of course, residents would've paid for that. It would've just been paid for over time as a part of the fee. What we're actually doing is now reinvesting and fixing the trucks. So we're gonna add to the fleet. I believe the plan as proposed is to have nine trucks fully up and running, right? And right now, we have, how many?
Three.
Yeah, I mean, it's bad.
Actually, we got four, it's actually-
Okay, but we're moving, we're moving to the proper complement of vehicles to actually be able to deliver adequate service. And really, the philosophy from the beginning has been to apply a principle, which is, if sanitation were a business, what would we do to improve a quality of service and at a reasonable cost? That application was never done before. That's what the private sector would've done, had they privatized it. So we're gonna show that we can do this at much less cost than I think anyone, anyone thought, but that we actually have the resources to be able to do it. It's just that we've never done it before. We've always diverted those resources to, you know, to pay for other things in the budget. So, and this plan, to be clear, is, has been done by Dave and Aaron together in consultation with, with mechanics and other advisors. And the consultants, the consultants have said what needs to be done, but the actual operation plan and how we're gonna execute it is being done by these two gentlemen, and I think it's gonna be a wonderful change for the residents in next year. We're gonna have much better service. We're gonna have an actual working fleet. We're gonna be able to finally increase recycling, because it's all sort of a ripple effect. But the first change, the first six months of the year is focusing on commercials. So I think what residents need to hear is, we're not planning to implement major changes for residential trash until the second half of next year. First half, we've got to, we've got to capture any commercial trash which is being diverted out of the city. We've got to make the repairs to the fleet. We've got to upgrade the trucks. We've got to be in a position where we can actually do it. Then there will be a distribution of much larger recycling containers, toders for trash for residents, a change in some traffic patterns where trash will come to the front rather than the rear. All that will be explained, and there'll be lots of conversation about that. But for budgeting standpoints, we're just, we're just talking about the dollars. And the maintenance budget was developed by Aaron and Dave in an effort to provide an adequate fleet.
And I just have one more question, a couple more questions. I don't really want to get into the street lights, because I think I- I'm sorry they put them on last. Y'all know y'all should've put them on first. But you know, I do have to ask these questions. I'm sorry. I mean, this is nine o'clock?
She's smiling.
Yes, 9:15.
I'm sorry, you had us in on a CBG block grant meeting until almost 11 o'clock one time, so there you go.
Were you here?
Yes, I was. You wouldn't give us, let us order a pizza.
No, you weren't.
All right, page 162. There's a drop in the garbage refuse collection. Explain that to me.
Majority of that is from the fact that we changed the rates for the vacant lots. And that's, and that's a couple hundred thousand dollar change.
That was the council amendment that lowered the rates.
I'm sorry, we got distraction. Go ahead.
So that's just basically taking that into account.
Page 126.
You got me out here. I wasn't gonna come. See, now I got here.
She just went to buck here. She probably-
Yeah.
Nobody else gonna be able to ask no question.
I have to go on record and ask a question. Building maintenance is 150,000 dollars. Went up to 50, from 50 to 150.
126. No service contracts on the fire suppression system, on the generators, on the HVAC system, on nothing, okay? In order to service those piece of equipment, they have to be repaired. It's pretty dark. I mean, the pump needs to be repacked from the fire suppression system. The HVAC system, up until last week, we were only running with one air handler in this building. It's hot here, because we, it's running wild. We don't even, we can't control it. We're actually lowering the temperature on the, on the heat system, on the boilers, on the steam, instead of adjusting the thermosets. They don't work. So there's some significant changes on these two buildings that need to be-
Do you think that's enough?
I, this is, this is the number, I, we can't just throw money at things. It, to purchase service contracts and repair it is very tedious. We have to bring consultants in, not consultants, but contractors in, three bids, because all these things are over 1,000. Go through the systems with them, make sure they understand, make sure you're comparing apples to apples. And this is, yeah, this is the number we came up with, and you're comfortable with it.
Because Aaron provided me an explanation now, since why you asked the question again. This morning, this afternoon, about the roof. Does all of that play into it also?
If money was out there, we could take 2 million dollars and fix the roof, so the building's never-
They need 2 million dollars to fix the roof.
But we don't have, and so we are, you know, we are looking at grants and those things.
Okay, that, that's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cede my seat to whomever would like to talk to you next. But those are the most important questions. I did want to make sure that, does Public Works have enough money to be solvent for this year? I don't need to be, you know, scraping at the bottom of the barrel, because it seems like we're always the last. Even though we're getting money this year, we got money last year, getting money this year. Are we really going to be able to be functioning where we're not, you know, scraping?
Well, like I said, we got a meeting with Gray Bill to actually make sure we got a plan to get all the vehicles serviced. That's, that's what we run into. We can't get them, we can't get them properly taken care of, because we gotta keep them running. Just like I heard Chief saying about his vehicles running 24/7. It's pretty much what the trash trucks is doing, you know? But once we get all of them fixed, I mean, properly fixed, we'll be, we'll be okay again. The other challenges that we have, you know, we had to move out of the incinerator real fast, you know that. But our trucks are outside. We always used to have our trucks inside. Well, we got block heaters for them, but when they get extremely cold- Well, we got block heaters for them, but when it get extremely cold, certain things are not gonna work. So, we got that challenge when we come in there the first thing in the morning, you know? Um, but, a, a, again, you know, I try to keep these guys up and everything, because change is coming. And, you know, like anything, you know, change, you know, some people can't dodge, dodge, dodge change that well. But, you know, it, it, it's, it's gonna get better. You know, it's gon', it's gonna get better. Um, the, the, the other concern that, uh, that I, I want y'all to know as far as snow removal, okay? Uh, like, right now, you know, you know, we just passed hunting season, you know, these two weeks here. So, we had a couple guys, it took two weeks off. So, when we had that, uh, little bit of, you know, inclement weather, thank God it wasn't a whole lot. You know, uh, we came out like twelve-thirty, and we stayed on twelve-hour shifts. And the guys left at, at twelve-thirty that morning. Um, we got like nine guys right now. So, those three guys is two demo and, uh, the one street maintenance worker that give us twelve, okay? Keep in mind, we have like eight areas, eight snow areas, that's our, you know, when we do street sweeping. Uh, two trucks, we got a five-ton and a one-ton truck in each one of them areas, okay? That, that's a total of sixteen people that's on shift. Like I said, we have twelve, but we got parks and wrecked maintenance. I got, uh, nine guys there, so they take that area. What, uh, I don't, I don't know if you're aware of it, I, we mentioned this before, but I, I want you to be aware of it, and when it's water and sores turning into CRW, keep in mind, we lost eight people per department. We got four in the, uh, first shift from water and four in the, on the second shift. Same thing with sores at that time. So, that's a total of sixteen people that we actually don't have anymore in the snow plane, okay? Um, so, putting them guys back in there, that, 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 that helps tremendously. We did reach out to another union, you know, like we did last year. That's how we got through, cause you know, we had some, uh, some, some, some bad weather. Uh, that's the first time we had that in a while. But, uh, we reached out to another union, guys who laid off, you know, uh, during the winter months that does construction. They, they labors, but know how to, you know, work a plow. Uh, there's some contracts, uh, uh, law bureaus working on that as far as getting that language together. So, you know, won't be no issue, which we already talked to our union, you know? Uh, but, with that, uh, hopefully, that, that piece fills in. But, we reached out to other departments, you know, uh, cause there's some guys that in other departments have plowed before. So, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, we don't have a major snowstorm until we get the other things, uh, settled. But, that's what's going on. And, you know, we have old fleet with our, even with our, 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 our snow, uh, uh, equipment, which wanna get through this year, so we can reach out to, uh, the surplus, federal surplus a week, cause the state give up some good equipment there. So, we finally got that in place. We didn't have that in place for a long time. Last administration, somebody did something and we couldn't, they wouldn't deal, deal with us no more. So, we got that opened back up. So, uh, a, again, uh, we put lining things up, it just, it just takes time. I just hope, you know, pray to God that we get through this, this, this winter, so we can kinda like look at that. But, like I said, our challenge is that we're, uh, uh, where we at, our fleet is a little bit too big because of, uh, uh, we can't put our, you know, vehicles inside. But, you know, we, we, we just, we just gonna deal with it like we always do. You know, and I, and I like to just say, as far as our employees, uh, again, you know, we, we understaffed. But, uh, you know, again, I'm an ex-military guy, I would go in the foxhole with, uh, all them guys, you know? Because, uh, they really do outstanding job with what we working with. You know, a lot of times, you know, uh, people don't know what our challenge is, is, you know? But, legal dumping, whatever. I mean, you know, we can clean Thirteenth and Berry Hill about ten times. If you go out there now, you would think that we never been out there. These are the type of things that really frustrate us, and it frustrate everybody in here. But, these are the type of things that, you know, that we trying to really fight that fight. We work hand-in-hand with Dolphin County Task Force, which, uh, Gino's been doing, uh, uh, serving some, some of the people that we caught, you know, we got a couple victories. But, uh, you know, uh, again, you know, uh, these, these guys that we had working for the city, I mean, you know, they, 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 you know, they put a lot of time in, they, they really do, you know? And I just, I just wanted to say that.
And I'll just say on the big picture side of things, uh, from a percentage standpoint, the, the only department in, in, in the city which is showing a huge percentage increase, uh, over the past, actually, a sort of infinite increase, considering we've never put money in it before, is sanitation. So, that is a statement of our priorities, um, and, there you have it.
I only have one question here. And you can answer this very, very short, cause you know how to talk hell. I can't put it on the...
Well, you, uh, y'all mad, cause y'all can't go to, uh, get some wings, is that what it is?
Sure. Well, if you're gonna buy me dinner, I, I won't answer that.
I have no questions. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate the service you're providing, and I gotta go.
Thank you.
I only have one question too. How much money, you only put thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred in snow removal, is that enough?
Did you move that to, to, uh...
That's on page one thirty-one.
Yeah, 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 we moved that.
Is there more money than that?
Yeah, yeah, snow control.
Snow control on like four or five, um, different sections.
Yeah.
Well, it needs snow control, but it was, you know...
Yeah, we moved that around.
Three or four different sections.
So, you put it, you put it all over. I seen snow control a couple places, but...
It's sprinkled.
Yeah.
Okay.
And some of it is, is, is what your control, for example, the, the snow removal out front here.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanna make sure we have enough, that's all. It's how much?
Snow control, ninety-nine-five.
What page is that on? Aaron, I did have other questions, but I'm just gonna submit those to you later.
Okay.
I'm hungry.
To my right, any councilman with questions? Cause that's good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're off the hook, thank you. And thank you for wrapping it up in terms of the presentation tonight.
Huh? Oh, no, we put it. Put it this way, we, we, put it this way, I can't wait till we get it, cause we never ever had one. But, uh, it's, it's in the works. But, we got our salt, we got our salt covered. We had a big enough tar, so we got that covered. And we, we, we using straight salt this year because of, when we put anti, anti-skin in it, when we take it over to scale, we was paying too much money at the scale. So, the salt kinda like dissolves itself. Cause we end up paying it more at the end anyway, we were using anti-skin.
Real quick question, I thought we put that the dome, the salt dome done by December first?
Nah, not when we actually came through here and, and, and got the money, but, you know, that's a process. That'll, you know, that's a...
Okay. Thank you, Aaron, I really appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Alright, public comment to my right. Anyone to my right?
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Of course.
I know it's getting late, I'll try to keep it really quick. Um, listening to Ms. Parker speak earlier about parks and recreation, a couple things that I had heard her say was about the Zumba class. The Zumba class is not one hour a week. Um, Ms. Johnson, who is our instructor, teaches three classes a week, one-hour class, and then a class on Saturday that is two hours long. And some of the classes that we do during the week do go over. So, Mrs., Ms. Johnson is not only doing an hour, sometimes she's doing an hour and a half to suit our needs. The children are involved in the classes. We've done things with the cheerleader at Camp Curtain before. And, the kids that come to our class, it may not be a program for children, but in the long run, it is, because you're teaching their mothers how to be stronger, healthier women, which in turn, they take home, and their kids see this. So, you've got the women going to classes, trying to become healthier, trying to become stronger. In turn, they're putting that off onto their children, where their children will then grow up thinking, I need to go to a gym, I need to do, you know, watch what I eat, I need to eat healthier, I need to do things like that. So, it's not just one hour a week. It is three hours a week and two hours on a Saturday. Um, the other thing is, is the Zumbalicious class that we actually take, that's what it's called, is geared towards all women of all ages, like the packets that we had given you before. There's women in there, we just had another lady come to class yesterday. She's in her late sixties. She's now, went to her doctor, her doctor's getting ready to write a letter that I'm gonna give to all of you. But, her doctor, she is now off blood pressure medicine, diabetes medicine, and a heart pill. There's more letters here from other women that are taking the class. We want to keep the Zumbalicious. The other thing is, is they keep calling it a summer program. Ms. Johnson has kept this program growing since the beginning of summer, and we are still currently doing it with what she was allocated from that budget to get this Zumba class going. She's still got this class going. This was not just a summer project. We're still currently at Zumba. I miss Zumba today to be here to talk to y'all, because I want Zumba to stay. Some of the girls went, left and went to Zumba and came back. We didn't know when the time restriction was gonna be as far as talking. So, that's another thing that we just wanna make sure that Zumba keeps going. I mean, we're trying to reach out to younger girls, teenagers. We want kids off the street. We don't just wanna do things for the little kids. We wanna see the teenagers come out and do something constructive. We have young mothers running around, you know what I mean? Doing unhealthy things, getting into unhealthy behaviors, not having anything to do in the evening, because there is nothing for young people. Zumba gives the younger women an outlet. It's a healthy outlet. They can bring their kids there, the kids join in. So, I mean, we beg you to continue it going. I know some of you are working very hard to try to keep it going, and we really do appreciate your support. But, as many times as we have to be here to keep it going, we'll keep coming back. Because we really don't want our program to end. And I mean, if there's anything from us that you need from us, if there's something else that we can do to help this decision be made, I mean, Highmark is a health insurance company. You would think they would wanna gear a lot of their money towards healthier behavior. So, if indeed, they do give that money up, we hope that you can find it in the budget to keep Zumbalicious going with Mrs. Johnson, because she is doing things to reach out to the younger women and the older women. There is no age restriction, there is no size restriction. There's been men that have come to Zumbalicious, now they usually don't come back a lot, but some of them do. Some of them do. Um, but we even have a mother that brought her young son who was heavy. And he came to a lot of classes, and he loved it, he had a ball. I mean, we really want you to keep this class going. We hope that you can do whatever you can to keep it going. And like I said, if there's anything that we can do to help that, we will gladly see to it. And we will get you any figures that you need. But, of all the registration forms that we've sent you, every single person that signed a registration form has been back multiple times. It wasn't just they came once and never came back, they've been back. And, one last thing, one last thing, one last thing. Um, Mr. Sanders came to our class one day last week. He came to one of the classes, there was almost seventy women or better at that class the day that he was there. And he said, I didn't know you guys have this many people. This is a regular thing, this wasn't just a one-time thing, we didn't know he was coming. But, he was telling us that the Zumba class would not continue come January first, that it would be over. So, that's what we're hearing, that's why we keep coming back, because we're being told by other people that the class will end come January first.
Let me just say, there are two different issues with, with Zumba. First of all, um, support Zumba, uh, I support Zumba entirely. What is ending come January first is the grant.
Correct, and I agree with you.
So, we have already talked to Highmark, we've already discussed Zumba, and we're trying to secure funding for the future. But, the, the way that we paid for it is expiring in January first.
Correct.
We could probably, hopefully, resolve that side. There's one other issue, and this is where everyone in the class could, could assist.
We're glad to.
We have a, we have an issue with the location of having Zumba in the Public Works facility.
Yes.
That is not a city-owned facility, we have a lease on that facility, and we're concerned about continuing the class there.
Correct.
So, if we could identify another location, that will solve that issue, and then we can work just on the funding.
So, we, we don't have to solve it tonight, I just wanted to make that clear. Well, that was the one thing that we had worked on, was working at one of the gymnasiums like Camp Curtain. Because Camp Curtain is a huge gymnasium.
Right.
And we've done things with the cheerleaders. We've gone to Camp Curtain.
I would go ahead and see if you can locate a new location for January. And, uh, we will continue working on the funding issue, okay? And then, uh, and then we will have, so there's two, two separate issues, that's all. You're gonna have to move out of the Public Works facility just because of the conditions in our lease.
Correct.
So, go ahead and plan for that, and then let us, uh, continue to work on the funding, okay?
Okay.
What time is, what time is your class?
Our class is from six-thirty to seven-thirty, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then, on Saturdays, we are there from twelve o'clock to two o'clock. Sometimes we alter that, sometimes we go in a little bit earlier. But, for the majority of the time, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we are there six-thirty to seven-thirty on those three nights of the week.
Your, your committee chair right here, Public Works, say it. You can use, write that ECA chair. City-owned.
We'll use the A-trium out here, we'll be glad to use it, we don't mind. We don't mind, we can carpool and pay the part.
I'm just saying, you said city-owned, I...
Let's keep it going, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, I mean, we'll definitely work on looking into it, but we, we still need the city's help, I mean, obviously...
But, let's separate location from funding, because I think we can resolve location separately from the funding.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll work on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, we appreciate you listening to us.
Any more comment from my right? Nope, comment from the center? Anyone? Comment from the left?
I'm Bill Cluck, I've been here for four hours.
Me too.
Um, I apologize to council and the administration, I have not eaten, my blood sugar is low, and I'm not in a good mood. I have spent the last two days, line by line, reviewing the budget. Chairman Allen, I think you've done a terrific job attempting to rein in the atmosphere and have people submit questions beforehand to make the process work. Unfortunately, you'd have cooperation from everybody, and this does a disservice to the public. Who's left? When does the public have the opportunity to participate in this process four hours into the meeting?
I appreciate that, and in the interest of time, let's get right to your questions, cause that's what matters.
Page twenty-three. Administrative department, departmental revenues. We charged the sanitation fund five-hundred and six thousand dollars for administrative expenses. We charged the disposal fund three-hundred and five thousand. I understand these are internal costs that we allocate across various departments. I have two questions. Can the administration justify the amount of the expenses? And I raised the issue...
Not answering. Respond then. We're gonna do this next week, but we will answer the...
I know, I have a board meeting next week, that's the reason I'm staying four hours.
There's a previous cost study done.
Well, let's do it next week. Yeah, I'm serious. Ask the questions, we'll respond.
Okay.
Let's keep it going.
Page twenty-three, the administrative costs allocated to the sanitation fund and the disposal fund. Sanitation is five-hundred thousand, disposal's three-hundred. The second question is, but twenty-fourteen's the first time we ever took money out of the disposal fund. What, what changed in twenty-fourteen that we started taking money out of the disposal fund for administrative costs? The reason I raised the issue is, a prior administration used to raid the water and sewer funds, and every time they would come to Harrisburg Authority for budget approvals, we would ask questions like, why do you have four million dollars for administrative expenses? And frankly, the answer was, because that's the amount we need to balance the budget. So, I don't think that's what's happening here. There appears to be a cost study, I just wanna make sure council's doing their due diligence. Question number two. Page twenty-five, under Public Works Revenue. There's a line item, recycling revenue hyphen demolition. Everybody with me? It says zero. Uh, when we demolish buildings, I think we, we recycle metal, we recycle construction materials, and we get revenue. Shouldn't there be a dollar amount associated with that? Vehicle maintenance charges moving up. Vehicle maintenance charge sanitation, two-hundred-sixty thousand dollars. Uh, I'm assuming that's fuel? Um, it, with the recent drop in gas prices, what's the basis for two-sixty? Could it be, or should it be lower? Um, there's a line under keep HBG clean. Actual seven-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-seven, what was that? And...
That was the trash cans. That was the trash cans.
Trash cans, seven...
Keep Harrisburg clean.
We got revenue?
Yes, we raised money last year.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, page twenty-seven, miscellaneous. There's a line item for pilots, is six-hundred thousand committed or a hope to, to receive?
Committed, committed.
Harrisburg Broadcasting Network, zero. I thought we sell advertising.
It's been moved to the special revenue fund, the HB, WHBG special revenue fund.
And that's only $8,000, and in past years, I think we've raised as much as 50, 60, 70,000. So do we have a person responsible for selling programming in the station and basically doing that? Do we have a person whose job it is to do that? Special projects, infrastructure, still on page twenty-seven, $350,000, what is this?
Oh, yes, you know, you got my question.
I'm sorry.
You got the same thing.
They didn't call me.
Are y'all working together? Off the hoots?
Okay. Page twenty-eight, revenue analysis. Sanitation utility fund, inner fund transfers, $1,649,261. This sounds like money being transferred from the sanitation fund, which is the money that the taxpayers pay on their utility bill for the collection and transport of municipal waste, being transferred out of the sanitation fund and being used to balance the general fund. My question is, what, and Bruce and I have argued about this, and we don't need to get into that discussion, my question is, what's the basis for the number? How did you decide that was the number as opposed to 1 million, or 500,000, or 3 million?
That is the balance.
They always do it, that's what they do.
That is the balance.
That's fine, these are policy questions.
Less than last year.
So we're weaning, no, I don't want to get, I don't want to get into it.
That is correct, we're weaning.
Page thirty, yeah, $100,000. Page thirty-six, general fund expenditures, it says for 2015, $7,898,000 for Public Works. Is this everything sanitation, disposal, is that where that seven comes, 7.8 comes from? Public Works is going to spend 7.8 million dollars.
Probably not.
No, that's actually Public Works.
Yeah, just Public Works.
Separate from.
Yes.
Thank you very much. City Council, page forty-one. I'm only doing this because I can't be here next Wednesday night.
All right, go here.
What are you gonna do with $100,000 for legal? Is that Mark Schwartz's bill?
Who else paying my bills?
That's for.
I'm cheaper than that.
That's Neil.
Pardon me?
That's Neil, a lot of.
That's Neil and Mark Schwartz, and for another case that we have.
Let's make it clear, we're not paying Mark Schwartz.
No, we're not paying Mark.
We have to have contingency.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not paying Mark Schwartz.
We're not paying Mark Schwartz.
In case we have to case something towards Mark Schwartz.
Cool.
But it's Neil, too.
We gotta pay Neil? Page 126, under communications, Office of Public Works, other professional fees, $250,000 is for?
Design consulting work.
$250,000 is a design for the 3.19 million dollar payment project grant that we have to spend on. That's about six and a half percent, which is probably a lot.
Okay, but I mean, we're calling that communications, then. That's fine.
Communications. You have the professional, other professional services.
Oh, I'm misreading the line item, it's professional services, you're right, thank you. Moving along. Page 130, Bureau of City Services. Under utilities and service, power, streetlights, $300,000 increase is for?
We're weaning all the liquid fuels, so we swapped the liquid fuel expenditure with the, we're gonna have the general funds, you gotta compare both budgets at the same time. We did that because of the streetlight pressure fit, but we can't use the fuel budget capital expenditure. Streetlights, but we can't use the general fund, Bruce.
Page 132, under capital outlay, lease purchase goes from 60,000 to 287.
Bill, you and I, you really can't stop it. I just want to answer.
Make, seriously, guys, make note of the questions, you will get the answers later. This is the way the process is going.
Page 152, the host fund. Let me note, on page 150, the description of the host municipality fees fund, it's not the Harrisburg Authority, I think this is a cut and paste from last year, it's the Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority that pays the host fund to the city. The purpose is for critical environmental projects and related administrative costs, and with all due respect to our city planner who does an incredible job, I don't think at this point in year two, one-third of his salary should go towards, one-third, one-third of his salary shouldn't come out of the host fund, which should be used for environmental projects, Mr. Knight does not spend one-third of his time on environmental projects. Page 155, if you look at the allocation, proposed allocation, we're gonna spend over 40% of the host fund on salaries. Now, I support the recycling coordinator because 50% of that person's salary is reimbursable from the state. The arborist is a new position, and it's appropriate for that to come out of the host fund. My concern with the arborist's position is, where's the budget for that person's work? There's no money anywhere for, what's the arborist supposed to do? Do we have enough supplies, et cetera? I would hope we consider going to the infrastructure or economic development silo to seek 1 or 200,000 for a major city plan to address management of our trees, and also have a process so we don't clear-cut. $50,000 from the host fund for recycling trucks should come out of the sanitation capital fund. Local grants, $35,000 is not sufficient. We had applications last year for $100,000 worth of grants from local organizations who wanted to do projects, and there's absolutely nothing in here to fund the Harrisburg Housing Authority Summer Jobs Program. The single most successful project that I've seen, we've changed lives, the kids that were involved in that project, their parents keep asking, are we gonna do this again? Can my kid be involved if they weren't involved last year? And all I can say is, there's nothing in the budget. $70,000 for community cleanup reimbursement, exactly what is that money supposed to be for? Is that money to go to neighborhood organizations to buy equipment to do cleanups, or is this to pay the overtime for the Public Works employees who transport the waste to the incinerator? If it's for the overtime for the personnel, I would suggest a community cleanup consists of volunteers, and I would hope that the workers consider volunteering their time and not having us pay overtime. I think there's other ways to fund that, I think you get contributions from Lax Swama and other organizations that fund major cleanups, and I think we can look to them for that. Unless the 70,000 is something different, like combating illegal dumping and buying cameras, I don't know, I don't see any descriptions anywhere. I will note, there is no money for the Environmental Advisory Council, not a penny for the legally mandated advertising for our meetings, nothing for printing, nothing for our website, nothing at all for anything. Frankly, we've been marginalized. Nobody has asked us for input on any environmental issue, other than Professor Durnbach's ordinances, which are coming to us soon, but otherwise, the hell with Bill Cluck, right? Page 161. The sanitation fund, other revenue, $300,000, I'm not sure I heard that question or if there was an answer. Other appropriations, if you look to the right-hand side on page 161, but 1,724,000, I'm not sure what that is going to be spent on. Let's see, 167, oh, that's done. Thank you for your patience, and I appreciate all of you being here. Now, disposal, I already asked those questions. 170, disposal fund, I think the description of the disposal fund is, this is the money on your utility bill to pay the tipping fee, the $190 per ton. And what I've been saying to council for the past two, three, four years is, you collect more money in that disposal fund than what is required to pay the tipping fee at the incinerator, and that somebody should have considered reducing the utility bills for the people in the city.
Can't tip anything if you can't get the trash to the incinerator.
So we're investing that money.
Keep, please.
I think this is the public's time, let me continue. The disposal fund should not be used for capital expenditures, that's what the sanitation fund is for. So there should be a five-year. I told you, I'm not in a good mood. There should be a five-year capital improvement plan to replace the trash truck fleet. There should be investigation into looking into natural gas vehicles. Instead of transferring 1.6 million from the sanitation fund, that could fund the capital improvement fund. To use the disposal fund for the capital expenses, yeah, it's okay, it's really the same money from the city, that's fine, but I'm not sure that's appropriate budgeting. Refuge disposal, page 172. Why is there an increase from last year to this year from 5.8 to 6.6 million? Are we proposing to take over commercial collection from the private haulers? Right now, the city enables private haulers to collect from local businesses. The waste, assuming it's properly accounted for and described as City of Harrisburg waste when it goes to the incinerator, counts towards your put or pay number. So what we're talking about here is cutting out private industry and having the city take over commercial collection. Now, there's been some issues where there's a reason we haven't done certain commercial collection or apartment buildings, and that's based on our equipment, and that's fine.
Bill, please wrap it up, please.
But the question is, have we informed the businesses that we intend to breach their contracts with their commercial haulers? The money for the toters. Apparently, a study has been done, it has not been made public, it has not been shared with the Environmental Advisory Council or their Subcommittee on Recycling. Before you approve spending over a million some dollars from the disposal fund, I would hope you get an opportunity to see this study and see what it says, and that you question whether we want to prioritize giving a trash can to every resident in the city, which I think is what this is. Well, I have a trash can, what am I gonna do with the one I have? Now, in the City of Washington, DC, when they did this and imposed, you must have a DC government can, they had no plan for what to do with my plastic old garbage can. So what's it gonna cost for the city to take away people's existing cans and the ones that Councilwoman Reed gave away last year? Are we gonna take them back? Are we gonna properly recycle or dispose of them? What's the plan? I think this is a decision that the public should be involved in, City Council should be involved in. It may be a great idea, it may be a wonderful thing, is that the priority for that money? And I think we need to have a discussion, rather than it being imposed by fiat through the budgetary process. Thank you, I appreciate your time and your patience.
Thank you. Any other questions to my left? Meeting adjourned.